Oh, Mr. Goss is in the line. Let me just pop in there and see if they're ready. What happened?
I was just thinking.
What happened to that purple?
I'd like to call the December 17th, 2018 meeting of the St. Charles County Council to order. And our first item for business tonight will be invocation by Don Sanders with the Harvester Christian Church, followed by the pledge of allegiance of Joe Brazel. He'll lead us in that. So if you all please rise and remove your hats.
Thank you. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening in gratitude and in thankfulness, Father, for the blessings that you've given to us individually and corporately, together as a people and as a country. Father, we come before you in the time of the year, whenever we remember your Son and the gift that you've given to us through him. Father, I pray for the meeting here tonight. I pray that you would be with our officials, that you would help them to govern and decide wisely. They would keep the interest of the people at heart and in the front of their mind. Father, I pray for the continued blessing and welfare of all of us. Your sons, Holy Name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Let me just signify of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Don. Next item, real call.
Councilmember Cronin.
Here.
Councilmember Brazel.
Councilmember Elam.
Here.
Councilmember Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Hollander.
Here.
Councilmember Klinghammer.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Thank you. And first item up next is the conditional use permit, Bill Number 4675.
Bill Number 4675, requested by Michael Hurlbert, sponsored by Joe Brazel. An ordinance granting conditional use permit, CUP 18-15, for a restaurant to Sunflower Hill LLC, property owners and Michael Kenneman applicant.
Yeah, so we need to swear, Mr. Myers, in please.
Do you solemnly swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Thank you. So, Mr. Myers, if you would, tell us about this conditional use permit.
Briefly, you may recall Sunflower Hill Farm, they have, in the Augusta area, in the Defiance area, they currently have a farm cultivation, a farm stand, a single-family residence. And just recently, they were approved to build and operate a special event space. And so they have this newly-built facility for the whole private events. And they're coming back for a conditional use permit to operate a cafe, or technically a restaurant, under the zoning regulations, within this existing building. They're not proposing to expand the footprint. They want to use the existing kitchen. And it's kind of a dual-use, such that this would be during daytime hours, whereas the events would be more towards the evening, so meaning they wouldn't have to expand the parking lot. So it'd be literally using an existing facility. They indicate they would be open between 7:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on November 21st, and after which, they recommended unanimously for approval with certain specific conditions that are provided in draft form in the bill that you have before you. And the Planning and Zoning Commission, excuse me, the Planning and Zoning Division likewise recommends approval, as meeting the conditional use permit criteria. Tonight, I'm not certain who might be here to speak on behalf of Sunflower Farm, the applicant, but I wanted to recognize, offer an opportunity for them to speak as well.
Okay, well, we'll have them up in a second. Does anybody have any questions of the staff? Hearing none. Would the applicant come forward, please? And, uh...
Hello.
Virginia. Introduce who you are, please.
I'm Dylan Lewis. I work at Sunflower Hill Farm.
Excuse me, I need to, I'm so sorry. We need to swear you in first.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Do you both solemnly swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
I do.
And I'm Carla Chitwick. I'm a bit manager at Sunflower Hill.
Does anybody have any questions of the applicant tonight?
Now, was there any conditions to put on your, on the, by plan zoning that you feel are unreasonable?
No.
Not that I'm aware of.
Where's Karen?
They're in Australia.
Oh, okay. I mean, this is a nice operation. A lot of people like, looking forward to it, so.
Okay. Next, we'll go ahead and open it up to public comment. Any individual supporting or opposing this application is now invited to share their comments with the council. County staff, we'll call you forward, one at a time, each speaker that has been submitted. Speaker card upon the conclusion of the individual comments. Please remain at the podium for any questions the council or staff or applicant may have you. We encourage you to keep your comments to three minutes. And should, answer, and should any other speaker have shared the information, feel free to say ditto, and the record will reflect your opinion. So, we have any speakers tonight?
We do. First speaker, Arnie Deanhoff.
Do you solemnly swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Arnie C. A.C. Deanhoff, public advocate and resident. And I just wanted to touch upon a few things. I'm for this restaurant. I'm for economic development. I want to make sure that our wine country grows in a fair and proper fashion, with some constraints. But I want to make sure that we're fairly treating this business like we're treating the other businesses that have come before you in past months. In the past months, there have been numerous conditions put on restaurants, either brewery or winery-related. And those conditions set things such as no music past 8:00 p.m. I don't know if they are going to have any outdoor music or any amplified music. They know audible music or noise after 10:00 a.m., as we know that this is a rural area, and there's hills and valleys, and the noises go throughout the valleys and disturb other property owners. And that the restaurant operation cease at 10:00 p.m., like you put the standard on additional restaurants that have come before this county council in the last two or three months. And the maximum capacity, there should be a maximum capacity placed on this establishment, according to their square footage. I think if I read the staff report, I believe it's 99 patrons. I would make sure that you put that condition. And I just want to make sure that we're treating this restaurant as all the other businesses, the restaurant-related, wine-related, bar-related businesses. So basically, to sum it up, I want to make sure that there's conditions that no outdoor music past 8:00 p.m., like you did for the other establishments, no audible music or noise after 8:00 p.m., operations cease at 10:00 p.m., and that the maximum capacity of 100 patrons per the square footage of the design be in effect. Thank you.
Mr. Deanhoff. Mr. Deanhoff. Does anybody have any questions? The applicant have any questions of this gentleman? Hearing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's, there are no more speakers.
Okay, there's no other speakers. We'll go ahead and close the public comment for the CUP. And I guess we're ready to move on to the next bill.
One thing, Dave, Robert, did you inform the applicant of how, to waive the public hearing process, so it doesn't drag it on as long? Or did we notify them on that?
We have, we've spoken to them and worked out how the stipulation agreement would be handled.
Okay, thank you, sir.
So next is Bill Number 4676, conditional use permit, 1816, for a storage of recreational vehicles and boats to the Greystone Holding LLC.
Bill Number 4676, requested by Mike Hurlbert, sponsored by Joe Brazel. An ordinance granting conditional use permit, CUP 18-16, for storage of recreational vehicles and boats to Greystone Holdings LLC, property owners and Maple Leaf Holdings LLC, applicant contract purchaser.
Thank you. Mr. Myers?
Approval of this bill would grant a conditional use permit, again, to build and operate 110-stall boat and recreational vehicle storage yard, outdoor storage. The yard would be gated and fenced with 24-hour self-service access. The property is already zoned commercial. Land to the north of this is located in the city of Wentzville, is zoned commercial, and it's already used for self-storage warehouses and outdoor storage of vehicles. On the south side of Interstate Drive, across from this property, there is a residential subdivision. However, there's a line of evergreen trees that currently exist. And as one of the conditions that would be, is suggested in this draft bill, would be to ensure that that line of trees be maintained. And they, in fact, the applicant is not only aware of that, but agrees with that recommendation. You may also know this is located between I-70 and Interstate Drive, so it's quite close to I-70, in an area our master plan recommends for commercial, both on this side of South Point Prairie Road and on the west side of South Point Prairie Road. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on November 21st, and unanimously recommended approval with specific conditions that are provided in your draft bill. And Planning and Zoning staff concurs with this recommendation as conforming to the conditional use permit criteria.
Does anybody on the council have any questions regarding that CUP? Hearing none. Would the applicant come forward, please? And well, so where are you in?
Do you solemnly swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please introduce yourself and...
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, my name is Brad Goss, and my address is 120 South Central Suite 700, St. Louis, Missouri 63105. I do represent the applicant Maple Leaf Holdings in connection with this conditional use permit request. And as the staff has already outlined and explained, the Planning and Zoning Commission did make a unanimous recommendation in favor of the CUP request. This site is located on Point Prairie Road, 1042 Point Prairie Road, and then also about Interstate Drive. It's an L-shaped piece of property. And I've given you a close-up here. You can see that there are existing buildings, there are basically five existing buildings, currently used for storage on the site. And the, it's, if you look at the kind of left-hand side of the L, that's where the RV storage will be located. Currently, that is unimproved. So this is a survey, a boundary survey of the site. What you can see we are doing is we are dividing the site. Currently, it's 9.77 acres. We are cutting off 3.5 acres, which are the southwest, which are below the area outlined in yellow. The area outlined in yellow is what we are actually issuing the conditional use permit for. So that's our 6.27 acre parcel. But the 3.5 acre parcel is not part of this application, and indeed, it is not being purchased by my client. So only the 6.27 acres is what we're discussing tonight. This is a current boundary improvement survey for the site. You can see the five buildings that are located on the site. Currently, these all have conditional use permits associated with them. There's also a structure in the northeast corner of the site, which is a cell tower located in the north of the site, as staff indicated, is a current storage facility located in the city of Wentzville. The current zoning is a C2 zoning, which allows for this kind of storage, provided it, we obtain a conditional use permit for it. There is commercial zoning located to our north, and then across Interstate 70. And then, as staff indicated, this is in conformance with the master plan. The current conditional use permits on the site that are permitted, there's dwelling and warehouse storage, which is permitted. There is also many, many storage and boat sales that are permitted. The telecom tower, which I previously mentioned, is also permitted under the CUP. And there are general contracting services relating to buildings, electrical, heating and cooling, painting and plumbing for, but no outside storage, except for service trucks. So that CUP has also been issued. And finally, we are applying for the RV and boat storage. There is currently, there was a RV and boat storage permit, there was, conditional use permit, there was, for this site. It recently expired, and as my client is acquiring the property, that's why we're coming to you for this conditional use permit, and also to provide for the necessary site plan for the improvements.
I saw a line of buildings next to this. Are those, are those also storage buildings?
Yeah, those buildings are used for storage in one form or another. That's correct.
Okay.
So, looking at the RV and storage site, we're going to have 110 parking spaces, as was indicated. The yard will be entirely fenced. We will have ornamental fencing on the west side of the property. The fencing otherwise will be this black vinyl coated fencing. There is a access, or we're using to the north, which is a shared access with the existing storage facility. There's a cross-access easement provided for that. So we won't be putting a new curb cut onto Point Prairie Road. We are also providing the necessary landscaping that's being requested by the staff and required by your ordinances. That's a mix of hardwood trees and various kinds of shrubbery, which is detailed on the plan. And then this is the tree line that was mentioned by staff that is going to be preserved, and that's the tree line between the property and the residential property across Interstate Drive. We did meet with the association prior to coming to planning and zoning. We were fortunate, they were having one of their quarterly meetings, so they were gracious enough to allow us to come. And we explained what we were doing, answered all of their questions that they had. Principally, the question they had was, were we going to keep that tree line? And of course, we said, yes, we were. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Does anybody have any questions of Mr. Goss?
Yep. Am I right? Is there a detention structure on the south side, so the water won't be flowing into the, into the...
Yes.
The pond to the south?
Yes. If you look in the slide I have up on the screen now, you see kind of a racetrack-looking dashed area on the south, that is the detention basin. And that's...
And the structure there on the left side of the screen is the outflow?
Correct. And that will be designed, of course, to county standards, working through staff.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes, Robert, is the tree line, a protected tree line? Can I cut it down and remove it later?
It would be protected under this conditional use permit, both the one along Interstate Drive, and then also along the east property line.
Okay.
And we agree with that.
Mr. Chairman? Yes? I have a question. May I ask a question? Yes. I didn't quite understand, how much of the property is owned by your client?
My client has the 6.27 acre parcel under contract. He is not buying the 3.5 acre...
Can you put that, what, that L-shaped back up there again?
Sure.
Okay.
That is what my client is acquiring. The area, you see where that kind of tree area is, and the area in green below, that is not being acquired by my client. That's about 3 and 1/2 acres.
Okay, but on the upper right-hand corner, on the right-hand side, that, he owns that today?
Oh, he has it under contract, the L-shaped piece of property. He is the contract purchaser.
So, I don't know, from 1,000 feet, it doesn't look like the kind of business that you would want to have next to you. What's going to be the difference between that?
No, he's acquiring all of that property in yellow.
Yeah, I know. So what's, is what he wants to build new going to look like what's there now?
He is putting in the RV and storage facility.
Yeah, no, I mean, my point is, again, it's a little hard to tell from, from, from that height. But it doesn't, it doesn't look like the kind of, looks like the kind of a business that would have been acceptable 20, 30 years ago, but I'm not sure this council or myself would, would approve something like that today.
I don't know that you would or you wouldn't either, but there are existing conditional use permits in place for those businesses. They are not being changed.
Does he intend for his place to look like that in 10, 20 years? Or is it going to look like some of our more nicer storage facilities?
I can't speak to what he will do with those buildings in the future. I can tell you that the parking lot is what he is building, and that that's what's being proposed as a change on the site.
But is any of that, I mean, that's, is that all rock, or is that paved parking?
It's gravel.
Which is a conditional, a prior existing use that's acceptable?
Correct. That is correct.
Would not be acceptable today?
No, it would be acceptable. You simply, as with Mr. Keven's storage lot, you, which you recently approved, you can, and several others, actually, in the last year or two, you can have gravel. You simply have to provide for anything that's necessary to keep down dust when you're speaking of storage.
And what about fences around it and, and...
Which we are providing fencing around our, around the facility.
Trees or shrubs or...
Yes, and we are providing the trees and shrubs that are required by your ordinances. In fact, we're exceeding it, because we voluntarily agreed to provide the buffer area to the south.
I don't have a problem with your proposed development. I have a problem with what's theirs now.
I understand.
And I don't understand why we would expect the new, the new place to look any different than the old place after a matter of time.
He is not proposing to do anything with any buildings. His entire improvement on this project is that parking lot. That's his improvement. He is putting in this parking lot that will be fenced and have the landscaping that is called for under the ordinance.
Yeah, I understand. I have no problem with that. My question is, should we expect that to look like the property next to it in 10, 20 years?
No, I wouldn't anticipate that, no.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I haven't been to this site. I plan to visit it, but I think it's important that we know that this property is also subject to property maintenance requirements, so I don't, I haven't been out there to really look at it to see if there's some problems with it, but I plan to go out there. Maybe could I ask, Robert, if we have any history of maintenance issues at the existing? If you know.
Well, I've seen the aerial photograph, and that was taken on one day in some, maybe a year ago or something. So to cover, what we've tried to do is capture within the conditions, the condition that says, as a precondition for site plan approval, any county ordinance violations must be abated, and any outstanding county permits must be obtained before the county may issue the site plan approval.
On, on other properties?
On this, on this property.
On this property. That's one of the conditions, is that we have to be in compliance with county ordinances.
Oh, on the entire property?
Yeah.
On the entire 6.27 acres, that's correct, which is what we're requiring.
What about the stuff next to it?
That's part of the 6.27 acres.
It is?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry if I was unclear.
But this is more, this is less than 6.27 acres?
No, our entire site is that L.
How many acres is that?
6.27.
Okay.
And the 3.5 that's outside is below that inverted L.
The condition applies to the entire 6 points?
Yes, sir.
So it all has to be brought up to code?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good, thanks.
Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Does anybody else?
All I'd say is, I typically am not a fan of these things, but the ones we had, we did just pass one at D and Double D, we passed one on N and Z. This is the one, this is in a more desirable location than any other ones we passed. And so that's the only thing, you know, I don't like these things at all, but it's right on Highway 70, and it's by industrial, so I don't really see a problem with it.
Okay.
Yeah, it's got a storage facility immediately to the north of it, and a communications tower on it.
Okay. Anybody, if anybody else got any questions? Not, we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. Again, same things apply that I spoke of before for public comment. Do we have any?
Arnie Deanhoff?
Do you need to swear me in again?
You've already are.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, members of the council. I'm opposed to this application for the following reasons. Number one, the history of code violations. Number two, the city of Wentzville has spoken to the county about these code violations, and there seems to be a inner multi-jurisdictional issue about who's responsible to clean up this property. It's too close to the city of Wentzville, and it's too close to residential homeowner associations. This surround, surrounds, this property is homeowner associations. This may determine, or may be detriment to the resale value of the homes in the area, and the people who might sell those homes might lose 20 to 30% of their original value that they purchased the homes for. I'd like to see some condition. This has been an ongoing issue of Planning and Zoning Commission, where we don't seem to want to put certain minimal conditions on automobile or storage-related businesses. Condition number one, I propose no derelict damage or unlicensed vehicles, not registered with the Missouri Department of Revenue. That no salvage or damaged vehicles be held on the property for no more than 14 days, and if they don't obtain a salvage, or salvage license, or salvage title from the Missouri Department of Revenue, they must dispose of that metal material of the vehicle or the truck. That no storage of parts, oil, drums, or any junk be on this property. Some of our storage lots in the rural area tend to have broken-down raggedy-type campers, some drums, some of those type of materials. I don't see anywhere where there's any berms, like we've required with some of the other outdoor storage areas, to keep them not obtrusive to the residential areas. I don't see much landscaping or new planting of spruce trees, like was recommended in the other storage lots throughout the county. The city of Wentzville in a letter dated November 13th, 2018, which all the council should have in your packets, there are some areas about paving of all the areas, rather than create dust, which will go into the people's homes in the adjoining Residential Homeowners There was a concern about vertical concrete curbing not being installed. There's concerns about a landscaping plan lacking on the site plan. They have concerns about signage, where that will be, or where that will go. A lighting plan or illumination plan, they want to see that the utilities are put underground rather than above ground. Is there a public sewer planned for this site? Nobody's addressed that. If they are going to do a leech egg system, if a septic tank, we haven't heard from Ellie May, if that's going to be acceptable or not. I think we need to hear from her, or from Robert. And then, I'm not sure, clear, from the city of Wentzville Communication, I didn't have a chance to call them today, but do they also require monstrance, which would require, per our county charter, homeowners charter in the state statute, would require five out of seven council votes in the affirmative to pass this measure? So I'm asking the council to deny this. This isn't the place. We are a zoned county. We don't want to look like Lincoln County, or other counties throughout our state that have zero zoning, which diminishes property values and diminishes the quality of life. There's a place for these. Unfortunately, subdivisions require that no storage of campers or boats. That's what necessitates these storage lots. But not so close to our municipalities and our urban core. They're okay for the rural area with conditions such as site through fence, landscaping, berms, no derelict vehicles, and having those type of conditions that I've went over, but this is too close to our urban core, and I recommend unanimous denial of this application. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I do, if you don't mind. Mike, Mr. Hurlbert, did you have a chance to look at this and serve? Do we have any outstanding issues? It's, it's hard to tell from an aerial photo if, if there's any outstanding violations on this property.
Put him under oath.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you guide?
I do. I did not. Um, the, the.
Glad we have that on the record.
Thank you.
Can you pull it up, please?
We can do that. Obviously, we have the condition in place that everything will have to be in, in order before they can get any permits.
Right.
And that, that's put in place for that reason.
My question is, is there any violations at this point?
Okay, we, we will double check, and may obviously make sure of that.
The applicant doesn't own it, though. You know that, right?
Yeah. We still, it's our opportunity to clean up sites when we can.
Well, it probably suggests we all take a look at it and see if there's, if it's objectable for the, we should, if there's anything needs to be corrected out there. I know that the current business out there, uh, is served by private sewage disposal, and as far as I know, there's not any issues with that. I don't know, uh, when it comes to Wentzville, it's not within our jurisdiction, so I don't know what, what they have to do with it, but... Mr. Goss?
If you'd like me to answer any of those questions, I'm happy to do that. Uh, there's no sewage planned for the parking lot, uh, so there won't be toilets, so I don't think that's an issue. Uh, and as for the signage, that would be up on Point Prairie Road, as we indicated at the planning and zoning commission, and the signage would be similar to what Keven did, uh, at his, um, storage facility.
Is it safe to say that due to the dense tree line on both sides is why we don't need to talk about berms?
That would be very safe to say.
Thanks.
And obviously, any other detail requirements, we're going to comply with the county ordinances. And, uh, we understand the condition with respect to compliance, uh, without stand, any outstanding violations. I am unaware of any. Uh, and we also have a condition already in the ordinance requiring operable vehicles, not derelict vehicles. You already have that as a condition, and we don't object to that. So I think Mr. Deanhoff's concerns are addressed, but...
The current buildings there, are they, do they belong to the person that's purchasing it? Or is this a person buying this, this entire site?
He's, he's buying the entire 6.27 acre site, including the buildings.
Oh, okay. So there's probably, there's, there are things that he plans to do with the existing buildings? Do you know?
I don't know what plans he has to improve them or fix them up. Uh, you know, they've been there for some time, and they're obviously been leasing them out and/or having people using them with conditional use permits and compliance, as far as we know, with county ordinances. So I don't know of any other expectation beyond that.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Once again, now, this is a condition, so they would, it would be passed, but you wouldn't actually get the permit until you brought everything up to standards. Is that, is that, is that what we're talking about here? Okay, my question is, if you don't get the permit, how long is it gonna take your client to bring everything up to standard?
I have no idea.
Okay.
I mean, how would I know? I mean, I don't know there's anything not up to standards right now. So, I mean, that's your call for me to speculate, and I'm loath to do that.
This is just, this is something new. I've never, I've never seen a permit that requires people to obey the law with regard to other things. I thought the law itself required them to do it.
I just want to understand something. The applicant doesn't own the property.
He does not.
So it has nothing to do with the current condition?
He does not. That is correct.
That's what I just don't, yeah, so.
I, I mean, I'm, I'm a.
Those are two different issues.
Correct. I mean, it would seem to me, if he buys the property and there are violations, he may or may not have something in his contract as to how the seller is supposed to handle that. I don't know. It's certainly not the purview of me or this council. But if somebody buys a piece of property, they own a piece of property at some point, and the county says you're in violation, comply with the law.
Yeah.
So I, I, you know, I don't, I don't see that as difficult.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know it was under contract. I thought you said he, he purchased.
No, no, he's purchased it under contract.
All right, okay.
So we, are we done? Any questions?
Just for introduction, yep.
Well, thank you, Mr. Goss.
Thank you. And we have, uh, Robert has the stipulation already.
Okay, uh, moving on, the next item is public comments. Public comment, we have, speakers would, uh, limit themselves to three minutes, and, uh, do we have any speakers tonight?
Yes.
And any topic that comes up, we'll have both for and opposed, uh, speakers. So with that, who's our first speaker?
Ray Reiniger.
Hello, my name is Ray Reiniger. I live at 2168 South Point Prairie, right, uh, kinda in the middle of Phase 2 of the David Hockel Parkway. Our property's right here. Um, I spoke at the last meeting, um, about this, and St. Charles County has contacted us in January of 2016 for this road improvement, and I was told the reason for it was that MoDOT wasn't doing anything about the route end improvements. Well, since then, there's been a route end study started by MoDOT, partially funded by St. Charles County, and MoDOT may or may not use this alignment for the future route end improvement. So my question is, is this the best use of St. Charles County taxpayers' money to fund this road in the hopes that it would replace the route end or make improvements to it as far as traffic flow and things like that? Um, I have to question that, and, and I'm here to ask the county council to take a hard look at this project and possibly, hopefully suspend it until the route end study is completed, because I'd hate to see St. Charles County come out here and completely fund this project, and then MoDOT decide to do the route end improvement in a different location. Because our property is probably one of the most impacted by it, which we were led to believe that this big sweeping curve through our property was needed because this road was gonna be at a 45 mile an hour speed limit. Well, if the route end replacement is moved in a different location, Buckner Road is only at 35 miles per hour. So what this does is it subdivides our property, and we're left with this, at the last design, was three-quarters of an acre, you know, on the south side of the road here, um, which I'm not real crazy about. But if this is the route that MoDOT chooses, I, I can live with subdividing my property, you know? But if it's not, I don't see the need for the money to be spent. And also, if, if MoDOT picks a different location, this is South Point Prairie here. As you can see, the north and south traffic, which there's quite a bit of it now, and it's only gonna increase, would have to go through this intersection then to continue on to the south. So my, my point is to wait until MoDOT completes their study of what they're gonna do with the route end improvements or relocation, um, before the county spends a lot of money here that might be unnecessary, in my opinion. So I'm asking the county council, the county executive, to look into this more before we go any farther to hopefully, uh, make the best use of our, of our money that is completely within the route end study area. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other speakers?
Yes, Kathy Reiniger.
Hello, my name is Kathy Reiniger, and I just wanted to dill what Ray Reiniger said. Um, just want to, you guys take a look and think about the taxpayers' money, and, um, you know, if the road is needed, that's fine, but it's silly to make a road that it's not gonna be the main thoroughfare if it's not, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Arnie Deanhoff?
Thank you very mu, much, members of council. Arnie C. A.C. Deanhoff, uh, public advocate and resident. I guess that you, as council, thought it was humorous and funny to hold the first council meeting this month on December 3rd, uh, this council meeting, uh, in violation of our sacred Homeworld County Charter, and to purposely keep me away from participating and testifying at the public hearing for the proposed 2019 fiscal year budget. Well, I'm here to testify now. We spend money worse than any liberal Democrat majority government in Missouri, and that's a true fact. We spend money like it grows on trees along the Missouri River, and it flows like gravy and does not matter where it comes from. I'm against any increase in new taxes like the chairman of the council recommended, putting a proposition safety on the ballot, which would be another sales tax increase. I'm highly against that. Why are we pointing Robert Schnorr as a trustee to the Duckett Creek Sanitary District? It's a conflict of interest, and I will be filing a complaint with the Missouri Ethics Commission because he is also the county director of finance. Can't we find one qualified resident? I've put my application in and told the county executive that I'd like to serve on a board or commission. We can't find one person out of 430 county residents? Do we have to appoint the director of finance for the county? That's just hilarious and a joke. Jennifer George is to be appointed in the consent agenda to the Metropolitan Parks and Recreation District Board. Again, we can't find somebody in the community to volunteer to go to a meeting once a month? But yet, we have to pay Ms. George another exorbitant salary in addition to the $130,000 that she annually makes? Another conflict of interest. The county councillor, Mr. Watson, why are we hiring somebody from across the state and out of our county? What is his contract? How much are we paying him, and what are his moving expenses? We're hiring directors from across the country with $10,000 moving allotments? Waste of taxpayer money. What favor was performed or owed to Mike Gibbons, Steve Tilly, and Gary Elmstead? Lobbyists in the bill before you? $66,000 to Mike Gibbons, $85,000 to lobbyist Gary Elmstead? Ridiculous. And, and I believe half of that goes to Steve Tilly. You know, we're making some friends and the county executive rich, and to pay for their Lake of the Ozark homes. There's no return on investment. That's what the job of the county executive and other members of the administration are to go to Jeff City. We have public information officers that tune to $350,000, seven or eight full-time public information directors, when we really need one, like St. Louis County. TV operations has seven or eight employees, another $350,000. What about the police request? The police chief asked for three police officers for our growing population, our increased time response. Pay rates of county employees needs to go from 1% to 2%.
Mr. Deanhoff, your time's up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other speakers?
No.
Then we'll close public comment, and do we have any report from the county executive tonight?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Motion for approval is presented.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. I believe we have one items.
Emergency communication.
The emergency communications.
Software.
Yeah, so, uh, is, is that currently tabled?
Yes.
Yes.
So we'll. Make a motion to remove it from the table.
So we got a motion removed, and Mr. Elam second sat? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion for approval of the contract with, uh, Tri-Tec.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Next item we have is, uh, bills for final passage, starting with Bill 4670.
Bill number 4670, an ordinance adopting and appropriating the fiscal year 2019 budget for St. Charles County, Missouri.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, would you read and call the roll?
Councilmember Cronin.
Yes.
Oh. An ordinance adopting and appropriating the fiscal year 2019 budget for St. Charles County, Missouri. Councilmember Cronin.
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel. Councilmember Elam.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander.
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer.
Yes.
That motion carries, so we'll move on to Bill 4671.
Bill 4671, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute agreements for advocacy and lobbying services.
Are there any comments or questions from the council? Hearing none, please read the title and call the roll.
An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute agreements for advocacy and lobbying services. Councilmember Brazel.
Yes.
Councilmember Elam.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander.
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer.
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin.
Yes.
Uh, that bill passes. Uh, moving on to Bill 4672.
Bill number 4672, an ordinance amending section 200.050 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO concerning fees.
Is there any comments or questions on that bill, this bill? Hearing none, please read the title and call the roll.
An ordinance amending section 200.050 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO concerning fees. Councilmember Elam.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander.
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer.
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin.
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel.
Yes.
That passes. Moving on to Bill 4673.
Bill number 4673, an ordinance amending the 2018 budget adopted as ordinance 17-113 by making supplemental appropriations to the regional medical examiner budget in the amount of $75,000, and by transferring unencumbered appropriations between line items and the budget of the St. Charles County Sheriff.
Any comments or questions on this? Hearing none, please read the title, call the roll.
An ordinance amending the 2018 budget adopted as ordinance 17-113 by making supplemental appropriations to the regional medical examiner budget in the amount of $75,000, and by transferring unencumbered appropriations between line items and the budget of the St. Charles County Sheriff. Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander.
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer.
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin.
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel.
Yes.
Councilmember Elam.
Yes.
And that bill passes, uh, was that Bill 4673?
Correct.
Okay, so we're now, uh, down to announcements and miscellaneous.
One.
One more.
4674.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Bill number 4674, an ordinance amending sections 115.320, 115.330, 115.670, 115.710, 115.720, 115.721, and 115.722 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO, all concerning the personnel administration plan, including but not limited to benefits.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, please read the title and call the roll.
An ordinance amending sections 115.320, 115.330, 115.670, 115.710, 115.720, 115.721, and 115.722 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO, all concerning the personnel administration plan, including but not limited to benefits. Councilmember Hollander.
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer.
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin.
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel.
Yes.
Councilmember Elam.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Uh, so next, uh, item is announcements and miscellaneous. I want to first say that, uh, mind everyone that the January 14th meeting, uh, was moved, is moved to January 7th. So did you get that, Mr. Deanhoff, January 7th? Anybody else? Yes.
I'd like to thank, uh, councilmember Hammond for a good job as chair this year. It's a tough job, and he took the heat well and preserved under the, under the stress. And I'd also like to, uh, wish Keith Hazel with a very wonderful retirement. We hope to be getting postcards from you as you travel all over and, and remember your friends back in, in St. Charles, okay?
I would also like to thank the council for their support during my chair, and, uh, and also the staff, and I appreciate, uh, everybody's helping me out with this, so, anybody else?
I have one thing. I want to give John an opportunity to kind of talk about the road project that came up, and I knew you had something that you wanted to add to that, talking about the highway end development.
Yeah, on the, on the project, I just want the council to know is that, uh, the highway department has put that segment on hold that this gentleman has, has. department has put that segment on hold that this gentleman has, is referring to. The project that he's referring to started prior to the route end study. When MoDOT started the route end study, they decided, based upon his comments at the last meeting, that they would put that, that short piece on hold. And I believe they've sent out a letter. If they haven't, they're, they're in the process of doing so.
Excellent, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that, that they knew that, so. There you go.
Well, thanks for bringing it to our attention. It's, it's good to hear comments back like that.
Anybody else got any comments? County executive?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I want to thank the folks to my left here, Joanne and John and Jennifer, for the work that they did on the budget, and especially Bob Schnurr and Debbie and who else? Tracy. Gets harder every year. It gets harder every year, as I'm, as I'm sure you all realize by now. Gets harder every year, and it seems like they work harder every year and, and came up with a, with a budget that everybody can, can live with, and not only live with, but thrive with, I think. But it gets tougher every year, and we'll be having more discussions about that as we, as we proceed in the, in the upcoming year. And let me add my thanks to Keith for, for his service, for his friendship. Really enjoyed the last couple of years. I'm very proud of the fact that I was able to give the two fathers of the charter, Don Bamer and Keith Hazelwood, the two co-chairs, I was able to give them both an opportunity to come and see what they hath wrought. And Keith, after two and two-plus years, I hope you're, you're happy with the job that the charter drafters did and the job that, that those of us here and, and who've come before have, have done to try to take that idea that you all had about a better form of government in St. Charles County and make it a reality.
Just a real quick comment in response. Number one, I have lots of thanks to, to pass out myself, and I'll do that as personally as I can without taking up too much time here at this county council meeting. But I truly would like to say that in the last 23 years, since 1995 especially, it took a couple of years of transition from '93 to '95, but since '95, I think the professionalism of St. Charles County government has, to some extent, been a reflection of that charter. And I must say, I think we should all be thankful that the county's voters adopted that charter on April 7th, 1992, and allowed those consequences to blossom. And Steve's done a great job as the county exec, and we've had the good fortune to have several different, very, very competent directors of administration and assistant directors of administration. So I think the charter is proving to be a great boon to the welfare of St. Charles County. And thank, thank you for the, allowing me to do my two months, two years and eight months worth of service here. Thanks.
Anybody else on the council?
You know, when he lays it out that way, two years, eight months, it, it seems like a sentence more than anything else. Congratulations on your parole. I hope you enjoy carrying the books for your famous author-wife all over the country, so...
I walk in her shadow.
There you go. I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Got a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Happy New Year.
We are adjourned. Merry Christmas, everybody. Happy New Year.